Greetings. This is the regular meeting of the Arts and Culture Commission. Today is Thursday, June 20th, 2024. Madam Recording Secretary, will you please -- oh, sorry. Seeing a quorum, this meeting is officially called to order. Madam Recording Secretary, will you please take a roll?
Commissioner McNair?
Here.
Commissioner Russell?
Here.
Commissioner Wu?
Here.
Commissioner Lopez-Guerra?
Here.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Here.
Thank you. We have quorum.
Thank you. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. At this time, members of the public may address the Arts and Culture Commission regarding any non-agenda items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the committee. No action may be taken on non-agenda items unless authorized by law. Madam Recording Secretary, does the public have any comments they wish to share? And please know that public comments are limited to three minutes.
We have one. Go ahead.
Hello, Arts Commissioners. It's been a while since I've been here, but a good while. And I'm happy that there's a lot of really good work going on in Santa Ana. And I was keeping an eye on the budget situation. And glad people came out to speak and that some funding was conserved. I was actually working on the statewide arts advocacy also. And 75% of the proposed cuts were saved because of arts advocacy. They had proposed a 58% cut to state arts funding, and 75% of that was pulled back because of letters and arts advocacy. And I know that in Santa Ana, thanks to your role in getting the city to participate in the Americans for the Arts Arts and Economic Prosperity Study, we now have numbers to present to the city to know the impact. And it's important to remember that that only measures nonprofits who participated. It doesn't measure individual artists, for-profit arts-serving organizations, restaurants or whatever, you know, that have performances and whatnot, or the work that the recipients are doing throughout the city here. And I am a recipient of the Investing in the Artists grant. And I'll be presenting on our project next month. But I did want to just give you guys an update that we're working on a video game, Votos Locos, to promote voting. And we will have our official launch July 20th at El Barco on 17th Street, just down the street from our media arts space, TVGB. And you're all invited, 6:00 PM. It'll be a lot of fun. Some of our partners, in addition to the city, are the Suave Zito Foundation, Creative Capital, and the California Arts Council, California Creative Corps. So really excited employing local developers. We have a monthly video game developer meetup at our space, and we've been able to draw people from that community to work on this project. So we're working with local musicians, local designers, and local video game developers. So really excited. We've also opened up a gallery, the Masarte Gallery, in the same space on the affordable housing complex of Santa Ana Arts Collective. And we currently have an exhibit up there called "Out in the Streets: LGBTQ and BIPOC Skateboarders." And the artist who's doing that, Skeeth Dewine, is going to be presenting today. But we're really excited to have that space and to do workshops. And, you know, now that we have both of those spaces working in tandem. And when we were advocating for that building to be for affordable artist housing in Santa Ana, one of the things that we said, and it's true in this building here, which was adaptive reuse of the Santa Ana Arts Collective, we said that artists need three things today to create. They need an affordable place to live, a roof on their head. They need good, consistent Wi-Fi. And we offer free high-speed internet to anybody who comes in, and the residents. And they need a 24-hour access to coffee. So given that Norm's is right across the street, it's just been wonderful to see how many events we have where people come, you know, whether they're writers, or musicians, or video game developers, or visual artists, and then they go across the street to Norm's to continue their conversations. There's a lot of great projects that are going to grow out of that in the next few years. But it also helps to stimulate the economy. Norm's is getting business. So we're excited. But I wanted to leave some flyers for you guys to check out our opening on July 20th, and then to check out our presentation next month. Thank you.
Are there any additional public comments? Okay. Thank you. Moving on to consent calendar. This is the time for the Commission to consider matters under consent calendar, Items 1 and 2. Do I have a motion to consider Items 1 and 2? I motion? Thank you, Vice Chair Wu. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Hernandez. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. Let's take a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the matter is approved by unanimous consent. Now we're moving to our work-study session. We have two items under work-study session. Please note that there will be no motion or action taken on these items. The first item under the work-study session is investing in the Artist Grant for the 2023-24 grantee recipients. They will give us presentations. So Tram, please introduce who we have tonight.
Okay, thank you, Chair McNair. I'm proud to present two groups today. The first one will be Backhouse Dance. The presentation will be made by Nancy Waris Brady, who is the Education and Community Engagement Director.
Good evening, Chair McNair and distinguished Arts Commissioners. I am, and Tram, and Steph, and everyone. I'm Nancy Warzer Brady, and I'm the Director of Education and Community Engagement for Backhouse Dance. You could go to the next slide, Bianca. I am here on behalf of Artistic Director Jenny Backhouse, who is not able to be here. And all I could just say is we're just thrilled to have your support for our engagement with the community. We have been around for 21 years as a nonprofit organization. Jenny Backhouse is our artistic director. We have Amanda K. White as our Associate Artistic Director. Our mission has always been to engage and educate the community about the relevance and vitality of contemporary dance, for the aesthetics, for joy, for the essential connections that it makes to learning, and for overall health and well-being. We have been nationally recognized, internationally recognized, and annually present performances. You can go to the next slide, please. So Backhouse Dance has a variety of different programs. Every year, we're providing new live performances in the area in Southern California, professional training. We're very committed to empowering the next generation. So we have extensive education programs at elementary through secondary, college, et cetera. A big part of what we do is collaborate with schools in Orange County and throughout Southern California. And one of our new programs, Dance for Kindness, has been in many, several elementary schools in Santa Ana through partnership with Santa Ana Unified Arts and also Revive Santa Ana Funding. And a big part of what we do since we've been conceived is community partnerships. Next slide, please. So we were thrilled to be able to receive funding for two special projects, not just one, but two. And the first one I want to talk about briefly is Dance Connect Santa Ana: Community Through Dance. This is through the funding from your Special Events Grant. And I guess this was a partnership with Santa Ana College Dance Department and through the Dean of Performing Arts, Kristy Blackburn and Heather Gillette. Next slide, please. This special event project was very, very important to us because it really was connecting the dots. Backhouse Dance has had a strong partnership with Santa Ana College for probably for two decades. Several of the dancers studied and graduated at Santa Ana College, began their professional careers there. And several of the high school dance directors at Santa through Santa Ana Unified District have been in our summer intensive program and have started their careers. I think we helped jumpstart some of their dance careers and dance education. It was very important and meaningful for us to be able to partner with Santa Ana College. And we had two parts of this. We had a -- next slide, please. So this was a two-part project. We had a workshop on Saturday, April 27th, for about 30 or 40 different high school students from Santa Ana High School, Valley High School, Anaheim High School, because Oscar Gonzalez was also a graduate of Santa Ana College. This was a workshop where we, together, students created, we created a piece that was later performed at the Santa Ana College Spring Festival. So 30 new students got to perform with Santa Ana College as part of their Spring Festival, which was very exciting for them. The other part of this, which Commissioner McNair attended, was a performance of our -- three of our main pieces for repertory for our season at Phillips Hall Theater. And this was where we marketed to the whole community. We've had students and families and kids and strollers come to this performance. I'd say the theater holds about 390, and it was very, very well-attended. Making this performance and everything free to the community was just truly joyful. And we hope to do this again next year, looking for funding. And we want to make this an annual event because for the partnership with Santa Ana High School and Valley High School and others, it's just kind of a seamless kind of project. And so that's why we thought that calling it Dance Connect Santa Ana: Community Through Dance seemed to really, really fit. So I want to -- next slide, please. Thank you so much. We were thrilled. We were on the marquee. And we thought that that was just great, great publicity. Our marketing was through different, all the schools, and Spanish, and also in English, and through Santa Ana Parks and Rec. So as I said, we'd like to make this an annual project and expand the workshop component. So that's something that we're working on. So, thank you. And am I out of time? I want to briefly talk about the other project, Glow. Glow Brio, which just happened a couple of weeks ago. Actually, that was our main event. Glow Brio was a partnership with the Bowers Museum. Your funding and support of this project was tremendous. This was a -- next slide, please. This fit the theme very much of empowering the community through participatory art. Because -- next slide, please. It was a six-week residency where we set work outdoors in the historic setting in the Key Courtyard and all different spaces at the Bowers. We created this new, original piece over time, over six different weeks. And during that six-week period, the artists also rehearsed in the studio. So we kind of crafted the different stories that we wanted to tell. And it was free for all. Next slide, please. So a couple of Sundays ago, we had our special event, intergenerational workshops, three different spaces outside at the Bowers. And everyone was involved with the world premiere performance. I think Commissioner Hernandez may have attended, maybe, perhaps, or not. But, next slide, please. The inspiration for some of the costumes and the themes came from some of the paintings in the museum. One in particular, Frank Coburn, who had a studio in Santa Ana. We kind of connected the color palette and the whole theme of glow and radiating to this painting, and also the spirit of making art together. Next slide, please. Next slide? Or next -- I don't know if -- yeah. So we'll play the video. So just, thank you so much. We all glow on the inside and out. We also have a little gift for you. We've just kind of done an experience video. So if you weren't able to be at the performance, maybe you can experience. Hopefully. We utilized all of the outdoor spaces and really got into the different stories that have been telling from our ancestors over time. During the different weeks over the residency, the public came and experienced and danced with us. So it was really an interesting process over time to create it. The students coming on school tours also danced with us. And so it was really just over a wonderful experience for everyone. On the day of the performance, we probably had about 30 different people participate in two series of workshops, all different ages. Part of the choreography, too. We invited the audience to dance with us. So it was just kind of all integrated. The company has 12 professional dancers and one apprentice and a tiny, little, small staff who do like a million things. So we call this an immersive dance performance, meaning that we're including the audience. They're all around us. We're all with them, and we become one community. This next section shows you some of the workshops that happened. Each workshop had a different theme, whether it was this, whether it was body sculpture. We're out of time? It was really cool. We can't thank you enough. It was really a wonderful experience. Thank you so much. It was truly joyful.
Thanks, Nancy. I also want to just say I recognize a lot of the dancers at your immersive Bowers Experience who are in the concert at Santa Ana Connects. It's such a beautiful experience. I wish I could have gone to both, but I was doing my own artist residency at the time of the Bowers event. That to say, what a beautiful elevated experience. I don't think our community gets to experience dance concerts like that enough. So thank you for bringing that to our community, and we hope you continue to find ways to do that. For everyone of all ages, all the inner dancers we have, right? So, thank you.
Did any Commissioners have any other comments or questions for Nancy?
Yes, just a comment. I just want to applaud you. Again, I also had previous engagement, and I was so upset because I really think the emphasis on immersive and participatory is exactly how we help people feel like art is a place that they belong and that they're a part of and that they can contribute to. And so thank you for organizing this event. And I'm so excited to hear that you have plans for it to become something that is possibly an annual one in our community. So.
Tram, I just question. So this was through the Artist Grants or the event?
They got, like Nancy said, two. So one was from Artist Grants. That was the Brillo one was from Artist Grants. And then the other one that was at SAC at Santa Ana College was from the sponsorship program.
Yeah, well, you know, that looks really wonderful. Like, I don't know if I -- I'm the Hernandez that was at that event. But I wish I would, and hopefully in the future, will be able to be there. I've seen the work. I've, you know, seen the videos online. And, you know, so it just looks like really great stuff. And I was smiling the whole time, just, you know, looking at just, yeah, the beautiful work that y'all are doing. And it's good to see that this kind of work and the dance aspect is happening. And the collaboration with our colleges is very important. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Nancy. Our next presenter is Skeeth Dewine, and he will be presenting on his project, Santa Ana Skate and Meet.
Guys, how are you? So, let's see, just a little bit about me. I've been in Santa Ana for 30 years. I was one of the founding members of the Santa Ana Arts District and the Art Walk. My project I'm presenting tonight is Out in the Streets, which is a project on LGBTQ and BIPOC skateboarders. There's a couple of things I want to mention real quick because typically I have a lot of people that imitate projects I do. So there's a lot of moving parts to this particular project. I'd like to make sure that I'm become a tough act to follow these days. Right off the bat, I want to thank Tram Lee for introducing and hooking me up with the OC LGBTQ Center. We could possibly get a sponsor through the Vans Corporation because of her efforts. We're working on that right now. I want to thank Victor and Pochah. They helped me write this grant. And Victor has helped me with some of the filming. And they gave me an art exhibition out of their new art gallery, Mesa Arte Gallery. So they deserve an applause for the help and to help me get this project up off of the ground. We also have Joseph Moreno over there, who's been my assistant for art for over, what, 15 years now? 12 years? Somewhere in there. So I bring my assistant. Little bit about the background of the project. I had a boyfriend named Roger Shortell. He was a surfer and he was a skateboarder. He came out of the closet. He lost all his sports contracts. They just said, "We don't need you. We don't want you. You are worthless to our industry." He died, is kind of partly because of the situation. I promised him that I would try and fix his situation at a later date. I'm using the art to do it. Santa Ana is the perfect place for this particular project. A lot of people don't know, but in the 1970s, Santa Ana had the base, the predominant lead of skateboard manufacturers. We had Continental Skateboards. You had Free Spirit Skateboards, which was producing 7,000 skateboards a week or a month back then. And you had Dino Skateboards, which was one of the first companies to turn out polyurethane skateboards or polyurethane planks. Continental is still in your city and makes wooden skateboards. So there's a lot of skateboard history in this city that hasn't been spotlighted. Now, we come 30, 40 years later, and for the past five years, I noticed that there's a Lesbian Latina Skateboard Club in the city that's been operating for five years. And nobody has paid attention to them or recognized them. And I just decided this is where I'm going to start putting and lay the gauntlet on the table. These girls have done an extraordinary job. Just recently, a week ago, they did a traffic safety class and took the younger kids, showed them how to make skateboards, and helped with the traffic safety in the city. They've been activists for about five years. They're continuing their work. The club is not coming to an end. And just a couple stats and why this project is so important. By 2028, skateboarding is going to generate $4.5 billion in revenues globally. It has now moved into the third number slot, or third most popular slot of the most popular sports in the world. It's number three at this moment. It'll probably hit two. We're coming to the Olympics. 2028 Olympics is right around the corner. I started this project with a running start so that I could be right out on the forefront and I can spotlight, highlight LGBTQ and BIPOC athletes, especially as we go on the news and in the media globally. So this is going to be really important. We're going to start thinking about murals and things like that, how we can address situations. We're in countries like Iraq, in Iran, in Syria, in Russia, where gay people are put to death, or you have racist issues in South Africa. Okay, so there's a lot of validity to this. Out of the $4.2 billion or $4.5 billion projected by the 2028 Olympics, 11.2% of that only goes to the BIPOC community. So we have a disparity as far as business owners, entrepreneurs. Skateboarding includes restaurants that go near the parks, apparel, sports design, sports medicine, sports broadcasting. There's a career motivation in this. The LGBTQ community only gets 3.2% of that money. So we need to balance the scales. And by doing this project, I can raise the awareness at the regional level. And then so hopefully, a few news stories go to the global level and spotlight it. Can we start with the first thing? So the first image up is one of the images from my day out at the park with the girls.
Can you get closer to the microphone so that it's for recording?
So these are the girls. This is some of the girls from the Skateboard Santa Ana Meet. And it's two different clubs. One is a BIPOC Skateboard Club in downtown LA. And the other one is our club, Santa Ana. And we met at a park, I believe in Long Beach, for this particular meetup. I've been photo documenting the girls, and I've been using an older style of photography from the 1970s, like old Rolling Stones and album covers. So people go, "When was this taken? Is this old or is this new?" So we can kind of rewrite the narrative as if the BIPOC and LGBTQ community have always been a part of skateboarding history. Can you get the next one? So you can see this empowerment, this really strong, I guess, Fuerte of one of our skateboard gals. She happens to run the Skate and Meet Santa Ana Club currently. Next one. There she is, skateboarding. So, you know, this is our sports connection and the intersection between sports and the fine arts. Next one. I've been doing a lot of art exhibitions. Irvine Fine Arts Center. Next. These are some of the paintings coming out of the series, too. So I'm going to make a film. I've already started on it. But I've also been doing paintings on the girls. So this is one of them. She's a fashion model. She gives her time teaching senior citizens how to skateboard. So, pretty cool, huh? Next. Did an art exhibition with OCA and highlighted some of the paintings just recently, too. So I've been hitting this particular project extremely hard. Next. Did two radio interviews on the project and highlighted Santa Ana Arts. And that was on Rainbow Radio. And Julie Pearl Lee of the Laguna Museum of Art said, "Hey, Skeeth, oh my God, this is so cool. I heard about your work with the city of Santa Ana, and you're doing a skateboard project." And it was on the radio, and all our friends listened to it. So that's, you know, that draws more attention to Santa Ana arts. Next. This is the invitation at Victor and Pochah's art gallery, Masarte. On the cover, you can see Leo Baker. And Leo Baker is one of the first trans skateboarders. So that's become a big issue, is trans athletes. So that's become a big issue is trans athletes in the Olympics. Leo Baker, he took so much heat for being a trans athlete, he dropped out of the Olympics. That wasn't right. That was a key piece in the show. And so we get to connect not only Santa Ana, but the coming of the Olympics and all the other issues happening globally to these two communities. Next. Here is a photograph at the show, at Victor and Pocha's art gallery, Mesa Arte. You can see some of the pictures and documentation I've been doing on the Santa Ana Skate and Meat girls. There, plus the paintings on the walls. And these are not small paintings. For the first time, I'm going out, big size, seven feet by five foot paintings. We're getting ready for murals. So, you know, it's going to be a very exciting time. Next. More pictures of the Mesa Arte art opening. It is still up in case any of you guys want to come by. I would love to give you all a tour. Magazine articles. I've already started generating two magazine articles already. I've only been at the project for seven, eight months, working at, and I think within Santa Ana Grant takes place, it's only been two months. So we're generating a lot of media off of this project. I'm not playing around. I'm going full steam ahead. Next. Victor with me, helping me film one of the skateboarders, Angela Banda. So you can see we're already in production of making a documentary and little mini feature ads about the girls and empower the girl skateboarders and girl athletes. Next. Another news story came out talking about, and I even made the front cover of the magazine. So this is Oblivion Magazine, which is kind of a new art journal. Next. Just kind of a montage of the interviews, a lot of the photographs and a lot of the artwork that has already been created. I think I'm already up to 70 to 80 works of art on the project. Next. This is the most, this is one of the things I'm most excited about, is starting a sticker, letter, photography exchange. This is a group of girls that are refugees from Syria that are currently in Iraq. Now, Iraq will put people to death if they find out they're gay. We can send them stickers. We can't send them anything about being gay, but we can have the name of the skateboard club. If at some point they can get ahold of a VPN number and they can look up Skate and Meat, they will see, "Oh, we got these stickers. We got these gifts from a group of girls that happened to belong to an LGBTQ skate club." Maybe later on down the road, that can change opinions. But if nothing else, it opens a door to an extremely repressive country. And we're taking it and doing it right here in Santa Ana, reaching out globally with the project. Next one. And of course, the Olympics are coming up and I gear in the project up for equality, equity, and diversity. And I want to make sure that we are ready for it in 2028.
Hey, thank you, Skeeth. Any commissioners have any comments or questions for him?
Okay.
I'll just say, wow. Thank you very much for paving the way.
Yes, and I was on the panel that looked at your proposal, I believe. Gosh, seems, I can't even remember. About a year ago. And I will say, I did not imagine that it was going to be so fleshed out based on...
You know, I've had imitators on other projects in the past, and I wanted to make sure that I had nobody that was copying a project I was doing. And I knew too, that it's one, skateboarding is pretty exciting to a large group of the younger generation, but I wanted to appeal and build the narrative that it would attract an older generation and go, "Oh, I never thought we could use a sport in this manner to create change at a global scale." And I really thought about it really hard. How can I do that? And I think that comes from 30 years of being in the Santa Ana art scene, and you become the mature artist. You're the mentor of the scene and you can teach the younger ones how and what to do.
And I'm sure many of us have seen skateboarders here in the city. I just wanted to point, as I was driving in, there was someone in this very parking lot out here skating. And it's just, you know, the connection is very important, and I love that there's some Santa Ana history in that as well.
Thanks, Coach.
Thank you, Skeeth. That's all the presenters we have for today.
Thank you so much. We really appreciate being able to hear back the way that this commission gets to represent the city by investing in these artists. And they come back and share to us the fruits of their labors and our investments. So it's good to hear back. Thank you, Tram, for facilitating those reports. All right. The second item under our work-study session is updates for the Ad Hoc Subcommittee on Arts and Culture Master Plan Priorities. So I believe I'm starting that conversation. I've been working with a subcommittee, which has consisted of Vice Chair Vu and also former Commissioner Martha Rivera, who is unfortunately no longer with us here on this commission, but doing great things out in the world. That said, two things we've been working on. I'm going to speak to one and then Commissioner, Vice Chair Vu is going to speak to the other one. We did send you all, commissioners, the updated mission and vision statement. That's the overarching thing, guiding guidelines, or however we want to look at it. That's going to frame the work that we're doing as we move into looking at our Arts and Culture Master Plan, which will expire in 2026. By then, it will be 10 years old and it will, it's time to start reimagining and preparing those steps. So we've been investigating, what are those pieces in the plan that we can do? This commission has looked at things deeply about what can we do with no funding, since we know the plan was funded for half the time, but also recognizing that we do have our position with Tram. So that to say, thank you. This is what the proposed mission of the Arts and Culture Office is, to be the umbrella that frames the work of that particular position in our Economic Development Department. So this is the opportunity for anybody to weigh in and speak comments that they wish to give feedback about and, yeah, talk about what you think as we try to be very mindful of making it broad, but not too long. I will say too, that if you didn't get a chance to process or you don't have anything now that comes to your mind, commissioners, we have created or will create a link for you to be able to share your thoughts via a Google survey. So you can give your input that way. We talked about that. But also wanted to make opportunities for the public to know what direction we're headed in, that we are mindful of what's happening and the direction that 10 years ago, the city was a lot different. And we need to be able to stay relevant, current, and contemporary in what we're doing to guide this work. So this is that step one, baby step into the overarching vision for the Arts and Culture Office. And that's how, under which our, the commission works.
I have two comments. One, I very much appreciate the adjective equitable access that's listed there. And I know that some of the advocacy that's been happening recently has emphasized the equity aspect of how we fund the arts and support the arts. And so I'm very happy to see that inclusion there. What I do not see, that I would like to see though, is a mention of youth and families. I know we do say communities, but Santa Ana, I'm not sure if this is completely accurate anymore, but at one point in time, not that long ago, Santa Ana was recognized for having one of the youngest populations, if not in the state, then in the nation. And I know that, you know, if we want the arts to flourish in the future and have artists, we need to make sure that our young people, our children and our families feel like they are part of the arts, that they can contribute to the arts. And so I think it deserves a place, an explicit mention in a mission on behalf of our city.
Thank you for your comments. I also want to speak to the fact that we were talking about the local creative economy in alignment with what one of our public comments was in terms of recognizing Santa Ana as being in the heart of the US Creative Economy Capital and building upon that. And I guess, to your point, perhaps it's in this statement, maybe it's in additional documents as we revisit the plan and look at it again to reimagine it moving forward, to spell that out or re spell that out here. So we can bring that to the table for further conversation at a later date. Because today, we're not voting on anything. We're just making comments.
Okay, I'll make one more. Someone else. I just wanted to emphasize again, I wanted to thank Backhouse Dance for mentioning the immersive and participatory aspects of the arts. And I think that's some, a place where Santa Ana can also distinguish itself from other arts communities in the region, for instance, being a place where when you come to Santa Ana for the arts, it is a place where you're a part of the art. It's not, you're not a passive participant. You're not just an audience member, but you're a really inclusive, integral part of art making.
Like the Meow Wolf here. You very reimagine everything, arts, very immersive. Okay. Commissioner Hernandez.
I just want to thank Chair and Vice Chair for the work on this. I, you know, it's, I know you got full-time jobs and all sorts of responsibilities and stuff, so taking the time to do the ad hoc work is really important. So we appreciate that and staff as well. I really, I like it. I think I'm kind of on the less is more when it comes to these kinds of statements. I've worked on them before. It's, you know, you can never think you could say everything in what you want. Not to yuck anyone's yum, but I just would say that folk just, you know, communities, it's all encompassing. So, because why not include seniors as well? You know, like we just kind of get into a place where we're, we're trying to include everybody for the sake of not excluding. And so I like the conciseness of it. And, you know, and I trust that y'all, we're thinking about all these things, including, you know, the ethnic groups, you know, that are in our communities as well, you know. So, you know, the fact that it's just focuses on the general goal of this and the impact that it's having on not just the community members, but also businesses and other folks and people, you know, that are bilaterally involved in it or, you know, appreciate it, not are, you know, like making money off of it, right? Did art for years, I never made money off of it. So that's, and there's a lot of folks that just do that because they love it. But I know that there's an economy. So that's, you know, one of the comments that I kind of had when I saw local creative economy. But I think in general, I know what you all were trying to say. And, yeah, we're here in the process of funding this to then make it palatable for folks to be like, "Well, what bang for our buck are we getting for, you know, with these donations to the arts events and stuffs?" Like, well, actually, you know, we're giving money to people that this is what they're doing to make a living while at the same time stimulating the economies around that benefit from things like Art Walk and such. So those are my comments.
I really appreciate you saying that because you also reminded me that it's not just the wealth in terms of dollars, it's the wealth of the health of our community. And we did have a big discussion about how, if the arts are thriving in a community, that means the health and wellness of the city is doing well. So that's part of what we're talking about, too. So thank you for helping me remember that that was part of our lots of discussions. Commissioner Lopez-Guerra.
Thank you, Commissioner and Chair. I love it and I thank you both for the gift of your time in crafting this and in going to the inclusivity versus the exclusionary component. I'm with you on the word communities and you know where my heart lies on family and community and youth, but then you start creating that. I would love whether it's here or in the articulation of what this looks like in different spaces and places and how it's reflective. The word reflected, reflective or culturally responsive, it doesn't need to be here. I'm with you. But I think as we continue to flush that out so that we start a deeper conversation of what this asset perspective looks like when we're talking about the arts and how it includes different assets of the way in which we view and live life. So I would love, I would love that. And again, I thank everyone who's engaged in providing these experiences for our community and for the two of you, for the gift of your time and talents.
Well, thank you. And also, just in all of this, I want to say how much I appreciate the originators of this plan. And also, it was the first time we'd ever done anything like this before. Now that we're underway all this time, now that we actually have a person that we imagined at the time, now that we fall under the Community Development Agency, it's a chance for us to revisit. You have to refresh plans all the time or they just collect dust on the shelf. So I appreciate this commission's willingness, the willingness of the staff to help guide us in the process so that we can adapt to be culturally responsive, to do the things that is necessary for our community as we refine what it is and now have a deeper understanding of what this work is about. So I appreciate all that has happened and where we're continuing to go because this has to be sustainable beyond all of us. We're not all going to be here, just like many of the originators, well, the original commissions who've led this work before. So we want to honor that work and build on it for what it needs to adapt to be in the future, thinking as strategic foresight, right? So thank you for your feedback and comments. And did you want to make any comment about that? Okay. Well, Vice Chair Vu is going to get to comment a lot because they are going to talk about the mural guidelines that we worked on also. I do want to thank in abstentia Commissioner Rivera, who helped a lot with this as well as we've worked to refine this and we finally have something in place. So take it away.
Yes, we finally have a copy of the mural guidelines that is ready to present and share with not only this commission, but hopefully very soon with the public at large and with city staff as a guideline for the procedures to follow around public art in the city. And this really was meant to refine the way we think about the processes around mural, public art and murals, so that artists who are putting up murals understand the processes that they have to go through in order to maintain their art long-term so that we don't have these murals that are gorgeous when they go up and then deteriorate very quickly. But also for city staff to have a way to be able to have common ground in discussing what needs to happen and when in terms of restoring those murals, what happens if they are abandoned, what happens when there is damage, or just general guidelines. In general, there's been a lot of ambiguity around who is responsible for what depending on where the art is. And we hope that these guidelines are a succinct way for us to be able to follow a common process. We also wanted to make sure that we were very clear about the responsibilities of our commission and the Arts and Culture Office, given that there is very limited capacity for us to actually oversee much. And so that is reflected very clearly in this document. And the rest I will let speak for itself unless anyone has any questions, comments?
These items are for information only, right, Tram? So we're not voting on anything, but would this be something that we would bring forward for a vote?
What we'd probably ask is for you to ratify it. So in, it's an informal vote, you know, just to make sure that everybody's on board, there's no glaring opposition to any of the issues here. And then this is going to live on our website. But it's also a living document, which means, you know, it can be changed as we go through it and more issues arise or not. So don't feel like this is set in stone and, you know, we could never change it after.
Yeah, it's the first mark to just do exactly what Vice Chair Vu was saying, create some clarity around some gray areas that we've had. As I know, we've had many discussions internally about preserving murals and how, where does that fall? What are the guidelines, right? And protecting the murals and other things, but also perhaps... but also perhaps folding this into more specificity in the Arts and Culture Plan as we move forward. Because that wasn't, this wasn't really part of that. And I do know this has been a long time in development. So it's exciting to see it come to a fruition with actually some things. And there's been a lot of collaboration. We collaborated with other departments. Thank you, Tram, for negotiating those relationships. And because it is going to take a broader pocket or pool of resources and buckets of funding and other things to support this work. So comments?
Yes. So thank you again for all of your work on this. I think the timing of it is so interesting because in just this last month, these guidelines, had they been approved already, would have become very, very useful. We almost lost a very important mural in our community on city owned property. And so having some process like this is so important to make sure that we don't lose treasures that are invaluable in many ways. And I'm talking about the Amigio Vasquez Chicano Gothic mural that is within the grounds of Memorial Park. And as we embark, the city embarked on a modernization project. You know, it's because of artists, activists in our community, Alicia Rojas being one of them, who was just featured in the Voice of OC documentation about this. Had she not spoken up, we would have lost this mural. I mean, very soon. And so I'm just very appreciative, appreciative of a couple parts. One, the neighborhood involvement piece. I also, again, this is third hand, but I heard that there was plans to actually create another mural with, possibly within Memorial Park, that did not involve the community, had no community involvement. Or the proposal of the mural was sort of envisioned and people were not engaged. And so I'm very happy to see this language here. And I'll look at it more closely and definitely have more feedback for you soon. But just knowing that that could have happened, we could have lost a mural and there could have been a mural that went up that did not engage our community in a public place like a park is concerning. And correct me if I, maybe I missed it, but is there any piece here about the documentation of murals? Because I know one of the challenges, particularly with the Chicano Gothic mural, was that we don't necessarily know those treasures that we have within our city. And I realize it's a big project to document historical murals, but what a great asset would it be if part of our city's charge on city owned property was to document those murals so that we do have a record of the artwork that we are helping cultivate and create as a city?
And if I may add on to that is not only the archiving and documentation of it, but the education of it. I've been in different parts of the world where there's QR codes next to the murals to talk about it. So adding that layer to this particular piece when we're talking about access and equity in multilingualistic platforms and accepting any other way of, and taking information would be very powerful. And another pieces, and not that it's here, but I worked on many years ago on a walk of our murals, right? So how do we keep those things going? Whether, I mean, and honoring as, as we're, as we're reimagining what art looks like and feels like to our city? And how do we ground the community sense of belonging, honoring and just celebrating the history and their part and contribution to it would be very powerful. So I'm excited and again, thank you, thank you for this because I think it's going to take us to that. It's on that trajectory. So thank you.
Lots to unpack here. I do want to say how much I do appreciate our artists who speak out and have passion for the things that are going on in our community. I actually was in the room and have heard a long time ago how there was plans by the city to preserve the mural at the park. However, it wasn't effectively communicated. So I'm sorry that it got to the point where it felt like the artist had to save it because I do believe the city is invested in our murals and wants to do this. But to the point of whose responsibility, where's the funding? Again, we have a lot of unfunded mandates or things that we have thought about, but we haven't put money back in. So that's part of what we have to design. In order to do this work, we have to come up with a manageable budget that we can propose to the city council to say, this is how much money needs to be dedicated to this annual process. We haven't really dug into that work and how much it's going to cost. I will say, taking off my city hat and putting on my day job hat, this is the work I'm doing inside the school district to memorialize, to have processes and protocols, to analyze and document. It's a lot of work. Is there anyone on this commission that's going to do it? I highly doubt it and we don't have enough staffing. And that's part of what's in our Arts and Culture Master Plan is the infrastructure to expand the staffing to be able to manage all of these things. Because we have, just alone in the sponsorships and grants and all the paperwork that goes with that, that is so much work. And we have one person plus all the other aspects to this work. So this is what is very slow going. And I hope that Vice Chair Vu can attest to how much time and effort we've really spent thinking about it, but also how difficult it is just for us with our schedules to get together to do this on a volunteer basis, to give input and guidance for, for what we can leave behind because it's a lot of work. So, so I wanted to say there's a balance and I, I do believe the city is invested. I know that they just approved the city budget and they're thinking about the arts. So that's an important thing. Go ahead.
First of all, just want to thank Chair and Vice Chair for their work again. I mean, as somebody that served on ad hoc committees, and we're not paid, but we are paid. And, you know, it's, this is the work. Same with city council members, you know, we signed up for this and, you know, so that, that's, that should be said. Not all of us are career, you know, like financially as involved in the arts as, as other folks on this, on this commission. So that should be acknowledged. You know, but we don't care less about it or activists or voices or other, you know, or, or, or city staff or, or, you know, we all have a responsibility to keep each other accountable. So that's really important. When I heard about that, yeah, I was shocked. I feel like it kind of got out of, out of hand. Whereas, you know, it exploded and it perhaps didn't need to. And there was things that, that fall through the cracks all the time. And so, yeah, I, while respecting the work and the understaffed aspect of city staff a lot of times or, you know, how much work is being thrown, being, you know, acknowledging that while at the same time, you know, acknowledging when perhaps, you know, there is the need for, for more support, more staffing or whatnot. Yeah, I, I see that with council members. We just, they just discussed this last meeting, right? About putting on the ballot to pay them more than, from $12,000 they get a year to $80,000. That's a great idea, in my opinion. Perhaps we should pay our commissioners more so that we can, you know, give more time to, to, you know, and efforts to this. But all to say, there's, I think we should separate things. One is what this is, the mural, the murals and guidelines, which the thing that jumps out the most for me is additionally, artist property owner agreements, city and private take precedence over these guidelines. So these are merely suggestions. They're unenforceable. Don't want to get lost in the weeds with something that we can't even enforce. Are there murals on the city that I don't like? Yeah, there are. And mostly it's because they're tagged over and we don't have the funds to do that. Well, why don't we have, because we're not allocating? And why don't we have, well, because for a long time, what, you know, the special interests of this city controlled this council and didn't really care at all or hardly much about the arts. And it was this big dog and pony show. Not to throw anybody under the bus or anything, but when I, when the issue of Bowers Museum came up and the kind of sweetheart deal that they were giving by the former mayor, that not Sarmiento, the forever mayor, you know, to really give, like, make it enforced, you cannot change this, was just really wild to me that those kinds of things were being done to be able to, for political purposes. And that's not what this commission, I feel, is about nowadays. I feel like we've advanced so much wonderful work. So, so, yeah. Nothing divides a community, I feel, artist community more like than murals and in recent time, the art walk. But the, but the art walk is a nice place now. And, you know, and, and we've evolved. I want to think that with the murals, it's going to also evolve to a place where, you know, we're documenting, we're respecting the work, we're providing good best practices for future murals. And then we're fighting, advocating and, and, and supporting, you know, elected officials that will support the arts that, you know, that will can, that will fund it more so that we can protect our, our beautiful murals as other cities nearby have done. And, and we could do more. So I don't, that, those are my comments.
I have a few more comments, but. So I mentioned that documentation is really important and I just want to highlight something because maybe not all of us are aware. And this goes back to the Chicano Gothic mural. The muralist obviously is no longer alive, but his family is. And they were accessible because they still live very nearby. But it was a part of the, you know, as it was being investigated, I think by Voice of OC, it was discovered that the mural family was not even consulted when this mural was about to be destroyed. And so I think that would be another piece that would be really important is not only to document, you know, the history of the mural, but also contact information. And, you know, in the event that a mural is about to be restored in any way or possibly changed. I mean, I do realize that cities need to modernize and evolve, but that should definitely be something that is outlined explicitly because to know that that step was not taken and that that family is here, I mean, you know, there is an exhibit in Orange at the Chapman Museum, Chapman University-Hilbert Museum honoring this very artist. And to think that, you know, a sister city or a city nearby would dedicate an entire exhibition to him and we would destroy a piece of artwork that is here in our community for all children to enjoy while they go swimming is just very mind boggling to me. I want to applaud, I take a moment here just to applaud because I didn't do this. Not only was the, were there artists who spoke up, but our city council members did step in at that final hour and our city manager to really make sure that the plan was changed so that we could preserve this. I want to make sure I gave them that credit. One other question I have is I'd like to know if there were any muralists, particularly Santa Ana muralists, who have been consulted about this, these guidelines. And I think it would be very important to make sure that we have heard from them because there's nothing like the actual perspective of somebody who is doing this work to shed light. I mean, you know, for us to shed, to make comments on it, that's great. But I would, I would like to know, you know, that we have consulted muralists and artists and also people who preserve murals. Because I know there's a lot of, there've been a lot of evolution, evolution in how we coat murals and so forth. So I think those pieces are very, very important. And I will hold my comments, I have more comments for later.
Just point of clarification, Tram, weren't there listening sessions about the murals?
Yes, there was a town hall to get input from all the artists. Everybody was invited. That was one way of getting input. And also when earlier drafts, which I have to say, Commissioner Hernandez sat in, was part of an earlier subcommittee working on earlier drafts of this. And then COVID hit and all of, you know, kind of disrupted a lot of things. But once we had slightly earlier version from this, some, certain leaders in the community, artists were involved in reading it over before it got to this version. So some of their input is incorporated in here.
I would, again, I would advocate for a revisiting. I mean, pre pandemic, we're talking four or five years ago. I just think, just in light of the recent events, again, I think it's so important that we incorporate our artists so that they feel like their voice is reflected in the document, in the, the ways that we advocate for the arts officially as a city through guidelines, however, whatever form of authority they take, minimal or not. I just think that's such an important piece and I would hate to think that we would ratify something without involving their voices on a final or close to final draft.
Thank you for your comments. Any other comments? Yes, go ahead, Vice Chair Vu.
Thank you, everyone, for your really insightful comments. Like I said earlier, the intent with this document is to provide common language for artists in the city and city staff and the commissioners to be able to discuss their work in a way that feels like there is mutual respect. And so with that in mind, I think there are, there's still some refining that this document needs to have in order to really reflect like full input from stakeholders. And this is our update for you right now and we'll be sure to come back with a more refined version.
Any additional comments or? Yes. Well, at this point, moving forward, Tram, it's my understanding that everybody gets a chance to review this and come back with feedback and how we can gather that. So perhaps this will be agendized?
Yes, yeah. So we can continue this conversation in the next meeting. In the meantime, please feel free to email me any of your feedback or any, any comments you'd like. And then I will compile that for the subcommittee.
Could it be that too, we are open or reach out to our artist network to get input from those who could be impacted by this, to get feedback that we represent? Because we're supposed to represent folks' voices and so that we don't bring our own agenda to this, but we can bring thoughts and ideas from others to keep this work able to move forward. Because it becomes unwieldy sometimes. So is that a strategy that we could activate?
Yes.
I just have a question. By when do, does this need to be finalized? Or is it, what's the goal?
Yes, the goal is to have it on our website as soon as possible so that people can refer to it, folks can refer.
And what are the guidelines for us to receive input from the people we're blessed to represent? Can we share this document with them? Is it an internal document?
It's an internal document at this point.
Okay, you want clarity on that, please?
I'm sorry?
Thank you for the clarity on that, just.
So to that end, I think the goal is it's a living document that's going to obvious, it's acknowledged straight up. This isn't going to be able to be comprehensive as to what is within our purview. I do hope moving forward as we look at what is the Arts and Culture Master Plan revision, perhaps that is something that's fully developed and, and built in there as the city also looks at staffing and other supports in the infrastructure that's mentioned in the plan to be able to address this work. All right. So this is time for any commissioners who want to make comments outside of what we've talked about so far. Anybody want to speak?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, sorry, my bad. Yes, I skipped over. Staff, do you have any comments?
Oh, it's okay, not, not, not this time.
Thank you. All right, now's the time. Do the commissioners have any comments they wish to make?
If I may, yes, thank you. I would like the consideration and I will take that responsibility of collaborating with our local higher education institutions for support of, of the arts community here in, in Santa Ana. I know that UCI has their first Latina dean of the School of Arts. So I think, I think between UCI, Chapman, even Kelsey Fullerton and Santa Ana College, I think we, if we engage them, then we can alleviate some of the impacts that this could potentially have on staff and on budget. So let's have those conversations and I'm happy to guide me and I welcome.
Did you note that, Tram? Just checking. Thank you. Any other?
Yeah, I, yeah, I just want to clarify my comments earlier. Like, I've been to the Bowers, you know, several times. I think they do amazing work. It's just more about the process and the. It's just more about the process and the, and the lack of, you know, just ability to, to see, like, you know, fine art and community art and the, the funding of one over the other. You know, it's about equity when it comes, where it comes to me. And I think it's, it's good questions to ask, because there's a lot of good organizations that don't receive very much funding while others do. It's, it's just the way of, the way nonprofits work. You know, I worked in nonprofits for 10-plus years, and, you know, it's like, usually it's like the big fish in the small pond when it comes to funding. And those, those big fish get all the, all the funny, the money. And the other ones, you know, are struggling, you know, to survive. So, you know, with, with my work, the way El Centro Cultural de Mexico, we also experienced, you know, that, you know, when we're taking on behemoths and amazing, you know, well-paid grant writers, and you're asking, you know, just volunteers and folks, you know, don't have that experience, don't have the relationships to apply for these funds, it, it comes down to me. So, you know, I think if we can have more, then that's going to be good, to support the Bowers, while at the same time, you know, having equitable funding for, for all sorts of art programs, like Backhouse, like, you know, all the other great organizations that we have, and individuals. So that's really important to say. You know, I think it's, I've, I've enjoyed being on this commission and playing different roles. You know, life is, is crazy, you know, as you mentioned, pre-pandemic and post-pandemic. It's like we, the, yeah, we lost years, we lost people, and, and we've, we've perhaps forgotten that it's, that, that it's good to retake things from, from before and after, as we're constantly trying to be better people, better public servants, you know, better advocates for, for the people that we're tasked with representing. And, yeah, I, I look at, I might, the only comment that I'll make on this is, this document in general looks really just comprehensive, as, as far as, you know, can we and should we continue to take input from the community? Absolutely. And, you know, as the saying goes, you plead it, you lead it. So let's organize, you know, meetings with, with the community and muralists, you know, from here to the next meeting, and, you know, let's have a mini-town hall, and, you know, and let's talk about these things. Let's get these input, so that we can, by the next time, we can vote on this. Because I don't want time when, and, and waiting for, you know, you, you know, for things to happen, and if they don't happen. So I'll personally be, you know, reaching out to folks that are involved in, in these spaces to see what we can do, and working with other folks on this commission, you know, whoever can or wants to, so that we can, by next meeting, ratify this and not get stuck in the weeds, because this is just non-binding suggestions to give, you know, the parameters not to dictate anything when it comes to this. And it's just going to be incumbent upon the neighbors and the community members surrounding these places where murals are, are or will want to be had, to be involved in the process to make sure that, that the murals that are, are made are reflective and inclusive to the communities that are here in Santa Ana. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Russell?
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Hernandez, for mentioning that you are going to, you know, engage with the community about this, these guidelines, because I do think, while we might have started off engaging the community initially, I think it's something that's really important. And now it makes me think we need to, we need to embed that in a mission statement, that part of the arts in Santa Ana means that we engage with the community at all levels, at all stages. Because, again, had that not, that did not happen with the Chicano Gothic mural, and it doesn't happen with a lot of murals. And I think it's a part of what could make very Santa Ana very special. And I, I want to make sure that we really live that idea as a, as a commission and each of us. You also spoke about COVID, and so I just want to take a moment, as I do every meeting, to mention some really exciting arts events that are coming up. And one is happening in just two Saturdays from this, or in two Saturdays, and that is the unveiling of a sculpture that is to honor the Apoda Rosas from Latino Health Access, who were our first line of defense, you know, mothers and youth who, during COVID. And so I'm just so excited, again, it's Alicia Rojas's mural, but it's really to celebrate the women of our community who stood there to help, help people. Their stories are so powerful, and there's, this project is just, this is the beginning of this project, and I hope all of you will be there in front of Latino Health Access, which will also be on the line of the light rail. And so everyone who comes into Santa Ana will see this beautiful testament to their work. Art Walk is also coming up. It is July 4th weekend, which I know can be tricky for people going out of town, but what's so exciting about this particular Art Walk is it will be the first one after our city has said the Art Walk is worth funding. And many of our city council members recognize that it is a part of our creative economy, and it helps, you know, helps us stimulate so many businesses, you know, retail, restaurants, and vendors who, who sell their wares. And so I hope you all come out really to thank Logan Crowe and his team of volunteers who have made Art Walk so dynamic, and to show that you, we all support Art Walk. Because had not those 30 artists and activists and community members and neighbors and youth submitted emails and come, came out to council meetings to support Art Walk, I don't think we would have funded it, particularly because there are many, many, many budget cuts coming. And I'm very nervous for what will happen to the arts as we do engage in that way. Also, I just want to give a shout out to Cool Lab, because not only do they have a Cool Lab coming up on Thursday at the Forest Street Market, again, a great example of business and art coming together, and youth and community, which is on Thursday, July 11th. But on the 20th of July, they're going to be celebrating their fifth anniversary. It will of course be at the Sagerstrom Center, which is not in Santa Ana, but still, it's an amazing organic grassroots project. And then lastly, Shakespeare by the Sea is coming back to Santa Ana in Birch Park at the end of July on the 31st for Henry V, IV. And so just so excited for those things. And lastly, just one final shout out, again, to all the artists, all the community members who know that we have these treasures, we have these assets in our community, and we have to stand up for them, we have to make our voices heard, we have to send emails, we have to come to the meetings. And I just want you to know that I appreciate every effort, every email sent, and we have to keep it up, because if we want Santa Ana to be the city of the arts that we dream of, this is the only way.
And piggybacking off of Commissioner Russell's comments here, I would really like to thank my fellow commissioners on this commission. I find that our discussions are consistently so thoughtful and so mindful of our roles as public servants, the work that we have already done, but always looking forward at the work left that we have to do, and what we're paving the way for people to come after us to continue to accomplish. I deeply appreciate how forward-thinking we are, always trying to better what we had before, so that we can really represent and create that better arts ecosystem here in the city. Thank you. And thank you to staff for always giving us the resources, tools, data, information, anything we need in order to be well-informed in our discussions.
Thank you. I want to piggyback on what you just said, Commissioner, Vice Chair Vu. I really love the passion and the energy that every single member brings, the lens in acknowledging the very many points of view from which we sit around how the arts are important in our city, whether we're right in the trenches or we're standing as allies and supporting all the ways that we're coming to this table. And I do agree, this commission is very thoughtful and respectful of the things that we're doing and our community at large. And I love all the passion that everybody brings. To that said, I hope that Commissioner Russell, you'll get us an email of sorts with all those dates and all those locations, because there's so, such an abundance of experiences that we can have in the city, that it's easy to get lost and find the balance. And, and also, I liked what we did before where we tried to set up a thing where we could represent here or there, and not everybody go to the same thing and some get left out. So I'm wondering if there's a way we could revisit that way to sign up for some things, that we get representation? Because I think it would be lovely for more of our community to see us representing, and not to assume that other people are going to be going, but pardon me, make a commitment to a few, like we did before. Thank you for this work that you do, and the volunteers, the, well, I guess we are paid. So that said, I, I appreciate everything, and this meeting is officially adjourned. The next regular meeting is scheduled for Thursday, July 18th at 5:30.